Welcome. Council President Sturz.
Here.
Councilor Coats.
Here.
Council Shamp.
Here.
Council Chamberlain.
Present.
Council Sturz.
Here.
Council Fry.
Here.
All members are present, we have one.
Okay, approval of the prior meeting's minutes.
So move.
Second.
Motion moved by Council Fry and second by Council Coats. Council Fry.
Yes.
Council Coats.
Yes.
Council President Sturz.
Yes.
Council Chamberlain.
Yes.
Council Shamp.
Yes.
Council Sturz.
Yes.
Six yeas, zero nays, motion carries.
Okay, we have a few committee reports. We have nobody wishing to address council that we have over the agenda. It's pretty dark out there, so let's move on to committee reports. Finance.
Yes, the finance committee did meet last Thursday to follow up on our method of the city billing townships for their share of fire protection expenses. We cleared up the idea that we wanted to make these changes going forward, beginning this year 2017, not to try to go back and recoup 2016. We'd already agreed on using the formula that was put together by the county auditor and the finance director and the chief of police to use for using the breakdown of expenses. And the committee, once again, has agreed the recommendation is going to be to authorize the mayor and chief solider to negotiate new contracts with townships beginning in 2017 and use the formula that was developed for that purpose. That was our conclusion of the fire protection. Police chief Torbit also came before us. He has an opportunity to receive the outfitting for a new police car free of charge. It's roughly a $13,000 savings if he goes ahead and orders this particular police car this year. It would have been next year's budgeted purchase, but there is money available in the seizure fund to go ahead and make this purchase. He's still working with the dealership that is offering this incentive, and the finance committee gave him permission to continue to pursue it. And if it does work out that we can save this $13,000, the finance committee will then rebudget the seizure money appropriations when necessary. And at a previous finance meeting on the 7th, the chief had also mentioned to us that the vehicle for the K-9 was being paid for out of drug money. That was just, he just wanted to report that to us. That's nothing that we had to recommend. And I think that covers finance. It's our recommendation, as stated, is to authorize Mayor Heuner and Chief Solider to negotiate new contracts with the township beginning in 2017 and not in ever before. And to use the formula as developed by the Fulton County Auditor, Brock Cogan, and Chief Solider.
I'd make a motion to accept their recommendation. Second.
Motion moved by Council Chamberlain and second by Council Sturz. Is there any discussion?
Just real, one quick question, Chief Solider. When was the last time the rates were?
Of the five townships, the contracts are 1991 contracts.
Ninety-one.
There is one 2004 contract that we have with Clinton.
Ninety-one and then one 2004.
Been quite a while.
Alright, thank you.
Council Chamberlain.
Yes.
Council Fry.
Yes.
Council Sturz. Council Shamp.
Yes.
Council Coats.
Yes.
Council President Sturz.
Yes.
Six yeas, zero nays, motion carries. I'm not sure the second recommendation, should the second recommendation also be presented?
We could. I don't know what's the recommendation. We authorized Chief Solider to go ahead and pursue the proposal to purchase this car. Pardon me?
You got your chiefs to work on.
You got your chiefs wrong.
Oh.
Yeah, you should probably do those. You have the proposal for the fire negotiations and then you have the patrol car. Do you want those separate or are you asking for the?
Well, there's only one, there's only one written here, so that's the one that I did. I didn't know if the other one needed council approval or not, but council could certainly approve finances decision to approve Chief Torbit.
I'll make it easy. I'll make a motion to approve Chief Torbit.
I'll second that.
Motion moved by Council President Sturz and second by Council Chamberlain, uh, Council Shamp, excuse me. Council President Sturz.
Yes.
Council Shamp.
Yes.
Council Coats.
Yes.
Council Chamberlain.
So, we are approving a recommendation to spend what money?
Drug seizure money.
Drug seizure money.
To the purchase of a car?
Yes, we purchased a car a year earlier than planned so that we could receive the $13,000 in outfitting free of charge for it being used as a display model at a show. We would have bought the car next year anyways. Well, it would have been budgeted for next year.
So these monies would be coming out of the drug fund?
Yeah, drug seizure money. It would not affect the general fund or capital projects.
Yes.
Council Sturz.
Yes.
Council Fry.
Yes.
Six yeas, zero nays, motion carries.
Okay. Thank you, council. Moving on to Safety and Co. Committee.
Safety and Co. met Thursday, March 10th. Jeff and Shane and I, we were gonna, we discussed e-cigarettes and to maybe add that on to our smoking ordinance. I know the county had put it in their, in their handbook that there wouldn't be any allowed, any e-cigarettes allowed in any of their facilities. We didn't have any issues about e-cigarettes till after the meeting, someone had discussed that, someone had tried to smoke one, e-cigarette here in the building. So, we just, we just thought maybe we should add something to the, amend the section, amend the section 523.03M to include smoking e-cigarettes and vapors and ban on the facilities. We, Shane moved, Jeff seconded it, and we're all in favor of preneding, amending the smoking.
I would move that we accept that recommendation.
I'll second.
Motion moved by Council Shamp and second by Council Coats. Is there any discussion? Council Shamp.
Yes.
Council Coats.
Yes.
Council President Sturz.
Yes.
Council Chamberlain.
Yes.
Council Sturz.
Yes.
Council Fry.
Yes.
Six yeas, zero nays, motion carries.
Thank you. Park Board?
We met on March 8th at 7:00. First thing we talked about was the black cop issue again out to Biddle Park. They have $50,000 to do that. I'm not sure if these numbers are right, because it says 42,000 square feet, and I think the meeting before that it said 25,000 square feet. So I don't know if Black Top got cheaper between one month or not. So I'm not sure about the 42,000 square feet.
I'm wondering if that is what it like with the other asphalt, are the other?
I'm not real sure, because, because like Rick was going to get a quote from Ernst Asphalt, it's a code process, I'm not sure exactly what it is.
I'm thinking that is what they were talking about.
Is that what they were now?
Yeah, I'm wondering if that got confusing.
You think that's?
I don't know, because Dave, Dave said he was in a contact.
Dave is, I think Dave's getting that quote.
Okay.
That might have been.
So that kinda got put on hold till someone got a quote for the code process.
Dave was gonna get that quote for next meeting, I think, is what they stated.
It's a lot cheaper process, but I don't know how it holds up as good as Black Top. Then we discussed gazebo. And the park board recommended to put the gazebo, if you, if you come off Lynnfoot and you're going down Beto, that, the first parking lot, and there's a soccer field, and then just east of that, there's a concession stand. So they wanted to put the gazebo between the concession stand and, on the, yeah, the south end, but between the gazebo, between the concession stand and the soccer field. They, I mean, they recommend, that's what their recommendation is, I don't know if the city council has to approve that. We also talked about the pool. The mayor must have discussed this with somebody about night swimming. And to do night swimming, you had to have lights shining on the whole pool so there's no shadows in any of the pool. And that was gonna get quite expensive. I think someone quoted maybe $75,000 just to put those lights on. And we just thought that might be a little bit expensive and we could use that for something else like the pads. So that kinda got put on hold.
That came from the engineer, Joe Turo.
It's either when I said the $75,000. And then also they talked about payers with individuals' names on them that donated to the pool, doing something like that. And also, and I don't know if this was a concern from somebody about the safety when they're doing the pool, but they will be putting a fence around the whole pool where they're, where they're working on it, so there's, you know, safety issue really there. And the only other thing, Paul Harmon, I don't, had brought up the recycling bins at Biddle Park, which we already have some, but someone, I recommended that maybe, I guess they're gonna replace the trashcans uptown, and that maybe they possibly, the park could use those for something, maybe recycling or just trash. Those are all it, I guess we just have to make, something we have to talk about if that's where the gazebo should go.
Yeah, I think the only recommendation coming in this one would be about the gazebo.
I'd make a recommendation, a motion that we accept the recommendation for the placement of the open-air gazebo.
Motion moved by Council Chamberlain and second by Council President Sturz. Is there any discussion? Council Chamberlain.
Yes.
Council President Sturz.
Yes.
Councilor Coats.
Yes.
Council Shamp.
Yes.
Council Sturz.
Yes.
Council Fry.
Yes.
Six yeas, zero nays, motion carries.
Thank you, Jeff. Holiday Committee. Scott, sorry.
Holiday Committee met Tuesday, March 16th. Aaron Tipley reported that some businesses have already started giving and donating. He also has inflatables rented and quarter restaurants rented. Phil Kessler is going to be contacting the sound system. Ruth Ann is gonna be contacting Mike Colan to have the art department, fireman's boots for collecting donations at various businesses. And we also have a list of eight different restaurants that have agreed to donate a percentage of their one day's proceeds, and that is all on this brochure that we plan on mailing out in water bills and trying to get around town posting them so that we all know where they're at. Would you like me to read them later on?
Maybe we could get that to the media.
Okay. I did sign one over there then. And that was about it for the Holiday Committee. No recommendations.
Tree Commission.
Tree Commission met on Wednesday, March 9th, and we had some discussion on Tree City USA Awards Program. Since we're gonna be receiving a growth award this year, Kim would gather the information pertaining to the growth award, and P. Carr agreed to give that presentation. We had some discussion, again, on our Arbor Day celebration at the primary school and at the middle school. Kim presented a community forestry master plan that was a project of hers when she took her Tree Commission Academy class. And it was suggested that we study it over and adopt it and present it to the mayor and council at future time. We also talked about a tree, our tree ordinance with regards to the tree vandalism and the fines that go with it. We're still kind of talking with other communities and Stephanie Miller from the state as to what other communities are doing before we recommend that to, I guess, to Safety and Co. possibly, or I'm not sure what committee we would have to suggest that to, but we're still studying it. Pardon me?
No recommendations on?
Okay.
EMS Executive Board.
Yes, Mayor, the EMS Executive Board met last Wednesday, March 16th. This was the stated annual meeting for that newly formed board. This is the meeting that we hold with the, all the fire chiefs and the county auditor. The meeting went well, we had an opportunity to talk amongst ourselves. Since this is a newly formed board, we discussed the procedures for our communications back and forth, if there are any questions or concerns coming from the fire departments to the board. And they're gonna, it was a successful meeting, and the board itself is still working on forming its own bylaws since it is a new board, and we hope to finalize that at our next meeting. We have a good start on that.
We're having some long meetings, trying to work on the bylaws.
We were given a very good head start.
Yes, you were.
Yeah, somebody who was paid by the word, and we're gonna whittle it down to something that, oh, Tom's not here, that wasn't worth throwing that on.
Alright, thank you, Jim. Alright, Department had reports. David, you were busy.
I have some grant information to share with folks tonight. 2016 Community Development Block allocation has been set up from the state to county commissioners and shared with our office. The 2016 allocation amount is $110,000. Last year it was two, or I'm sorry, $106,000, I believe, there's a formula that they base that amount off of. So those, those, that money will be available, we'll go through the public participation process, we'll have a couple of public hearings, and then the application down to the state will be due, I believe, June 17th. So some of the past projects that we've funded with that in the county are Fayette's doing a water meter improvement project, they're finishing up with their Phase 3 now, road resurfacing projects, things of that nature. Also with the downtown revitalization grant, lack of commitment on building business owners' parks with the one-to-one match, struggling to get that money spent, been going back and forth with the state ODSA office, and they gave some documentation that made me feel comfortable enough to talk with the county commissioners and ask if maybe we could pursue that as a 100% grant for the building business owners. I have that blessing, so we're pursuing that grant as a 100% grant now. So the interest is now, that's made me quite busy, so I'll be busy. We'll have the money spent, I'm pretty certain. So I was getting a little nervous with the one-to-one grants and that lack of commitment there, but I'm feeling pretty confident now. With the downtown revitalization grant, the ADA compliance portion of that grant got visited, or had a visit from Peterman and Associates today, so we can kinda go over them conducting their engineering services, their surveying of the downtown ramps and focusing on the ADA compliance. Hopefully in the next few weeks, those folks will be out getting that work done so we can get an engineer's estimate and put that project out to bid. If you recall, there was a Targets of Opportunity Grant that I've mentioned for the Wasiyan Public Library. That is a $200,000 grant that was applied for back in June of 2014. I made a phone call before this meeting tonight just to kinda inquire about that grant, see where we're at with it, and they said that we do have a grant agreement coming our way to finalize, so that grant was approved for $200,000 to help the Wasiyan Public Library with some much-needed foundation work that they're gonna be conducting and interior ADA compliance work among other activities. Also, we have a downtown revitalization committee meeting on the 28th, so hopefully we will make some decisions on the style and placement of benches and trash receptacles among some other things at that meeting.
Any questions for David on?
Yeah, quick question. Eddie and Fluck come up with the grant money for sidewalk to Ligon Street, do you have any?
I haven't received any or met with anybody about a master plan of any kind to pursue something like that, so like I've said in the past.
With Sarah's Garden going, I mean, they're still building and going.
Yep, I haven't talked with anybody about creating or any folks about a master plan on the sidewalk plan, but that, I mean, that would be a good allocation project if, I mean, if there's folks that have an idea of how we need to pursue to go there, I mean, there's, there's funds that could be available for a project like that.
I would think so.
I'd be more than happy to help out with anybody that has any ideas unless I'm being dinged to come up with those ideas, but I've nobody instructed me to do so, so.
I know, that is, I just think that's something that we, maybe we could try to find somebody out of the house and try to focus with that too. I know that Ligon Street really wants to.
Well, the school, the school wanted it, but when we had the opportunity, they couldn't come up with the number of walkers that made us eligible for the.
But now that.
Safe routes to school.
But now that they don't have busing for field trips, I think that they would wanna come around and try to see if they could try something else. And with them and the hospital and Sarah's Garden and us, I'm thinking maybe we could try it again.
Any of that or?
Does appear to try.
An estimate, I don't even know what an estimate would be for, for that section of sidewalks, and maybe you could start something like that.
We had, we had some estimate on, but the idea too is that the hospital developed that ground that they got, they will be obligated to put sidewalks in, that's part of their development.
Right.
They would have to put walks in as they develop that property.
I don't know what their, their plan is.
Well, we may wanna, we might wanna have conversation with the hospital about it and see if they wanna be good stewards of the property there.
Right. Okay. Maybe we can bring them into our next planning meeting and see.
But with that said, with the grants and everything, so any council members, if there's any building business owners that you come across and you wanna share that information?
100%.
100% grant is a, that's a good deal, so if you wanna share that information to folks that may have, I've let fall through the cracks, but I've done some outreach back at the beginning of the application, and I have those folks that are on deck that I'm focusing on getting some money, and if there's any leftover, it's gonna be handled first come, first served, case by case basis, so.
There's always stipulations with grants, but if you, you know, still try to get somebody, that'd be great.
Thank you.
Thank you, David, for working at this so hard. Okay, Rick?
I have nothing other than working with the contracts and the EMS Executive Committee will get that one.
Hopefully we.
John's already reported everything you need to know about that.
Busy guy, yours has been busy. Okay. And Bill?
I'm at Sturck Park that I am working on a grant called Community Policing Relations Grant, it's up to $30,000, and I've been probably soliciting a council member tonight to, yeah, the collaboration or to be the public's interest in this.
Tom?
You should have received the five-year program for sidewalks in your packet. If you have any questions, you can kinda text me on it. Also, I got a notice from Heidi Curden from Habitat, they're also doing a, for people that wanna maybe fix up the outside of their homes, they have a program now. You can contact her at 335-7000. It's the same type of program for the housing, they have to be eligible, willing to put in sweat equity and a little bit of money to pay for some things, but it's to help people that maybe needs extra help, help to maybe spruce up the yard or the siding or do some painting or some, things like that, so that's something that they're putting in. I know they do have a house going up in Swanton this year, but other than that, they don't, they still don't, they're looking for lots here, so still working with them on that, and that's about it.
Dennis?
I don't know, the water plant, sandblasting is continuing for the clarifier painting project. We got notification that changes are coming from our friends at Ohio EPA for the harmful algal bloom monitoring this season. Or testing, of course, equals more dollars spent. Certainly that's a worthy endeavor. Public Works guys are assisting with the Lynnfoot activities and working quite a bit here in the next, well, this week and last, starting to get some of the park facilities around for the season. A little work on the bike trail as well. Was informed by the folks at NORDA that they have applied for a grant to pave the bike trail, I guess from where, where the paving stops coming out of the Toledo Metro parts going towards County Road a lot. So I just may have some here of that. Public Works guys been doing water main work, some from breaks and some new, some replacement. On the Lynnfoot Street project, the contractor's continuing to connect water service lines to existing customers. This week they're going to do the storm sewer work through the Chute Avenue intersection, so it'll be a jam up there for a day or two. Already covered cool updates and other reports. And in your packet, there's an invitation to the Fulton County Economic Development Corporation's annual meeting, can help Thursday, April 21st. Starts at 5:00 PM, dinners at 6:00, an award ceremony, and then a really good speaker. Since we're a member, it's $20 a head, or if we get a table of eight, it's $150, which is 10 bucks less than eight people, so if you're interested in that at all, let me know, let Meg know, and, you know, we'll get our reservations set, but that should be a really good evening, and certainly a worthwhile event. I guess that's all I have from that.
On the holiday, will they be working Fridays, Saturdays, and Friday?
Days.
Lynnfoot?
No.
Will be?
No, 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 they won't work on Friday.
Okay.
I'd be surprised if they do.
Okay, that was one question asked.
Dennis, real quick, one question, Mayor, for Dennis?
Yes.
The intersection of Lynnfoot and Chute, I think I heard radio traffic that it's no more sensors, that those are timed now? Is that?
I don't know the answer to that, they do have it fixed, so it's much better than it was the day they changed the signal over, but.
Okay, alright.
The loop still exists on the east side of the intersection, and I don't think the loop on the west side has been torn out yet.
Oh, I see.
So I hope they reconnected it.
Okay, alright.
Yeah, they had us all messed up there for about 24 hours.
Anything else? Tom have anything for you?
Yes, Tom did give me a few notes, couldn't be here this evening, but told me to express that he's working on several projects, a couple noteworthy, one that he is working with a consultant firm to finish up the new jobs descriptions, and will get with council at some point in the near future, once that's finalized. He's also worked with the Civil Service Commission regarding some revisions to the civil service rules for new appointments and promotions to the fire and police departments and. for new appointments and promotions to the fire and police departments and will bring that to the council's attention when that's taken care of as well. That's all?
That's it?
Yes.
All right. Moving on then, let's go to first reading of legislation. Resolution 2016 dash four, authorizing the mayor to enter into a mutual aid agreement with the city of Cleveland and declaring an emergency.
I move that we suspend the rules and declare an emergency on resolution 2016 dash four.
Second.
Motion move by Councilor Shamp and second by Councilor Coast. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I, Bill, do you know, I don't, I'd understood they were gonna be sending four police officers down there?
Yes.
That's not gonna leave a shirt or anything like that?
No, I've, uh, reworked the schedule to Holiday.
And it's gonna be for the entire week of the?
Uh, technically I believe the OAS is for three days, but, uh, me and Tom have a little couple of days more than that.
We've got accelerated backup. Anybody?
Yes.
Okay.
I have to just cancel vacations.
Okay, that's it.
Councilor Shamp?
Yes.
Councilor Coast?
Yes.
Council President Sturz?
Yes.
Councilor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Councilor Sturz?
Yes.
Councilor Frye?
Yes.
Six A's, zero N's. Motion carries.
Some passage.
Second.
Motion move by Councilor Coast and second by Councilor Chamberlain. Councilor Coast?
Yes.
Councilor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Councilor Shamp?
Yes.
Council President Sturz?
Yes.
Councilor Sturz?
Yes.
Councilor Frye?
Yes.
Six A's, zero N's. Resolution 2016 dash four passes on emergency and is now in effect.
Nothing under, uh, second reading of legislation. Nothing under the third reading of legislation. Under new business, we finally found Rick. He was not appointed in January for INT, uh, INTV board. Um, so we need to add Rick. We need a motion to put him on the INTV board for this year.
Salute.
Second.
Motion move by Councilor Shamp and second by Council President Sturz. Councilor Shamp?
Yes.
Council President Sturz?
Yes.
Councilor Coast?
Yes.
Council Chamberlain?
Yes.
Council Sturz?
Yes.
Council Frye?
Anyone get out of there? Yes.
Six A's, zero N's. Motion carries.
Second thing I wanted to add was everybody got, um, handed out the information from the Western Kentucky trip. Um, there's a lot of good information in here on, um, Jeff Ekel for you to read, so, you know, enjoy that. It was a great trip and I wanna thank you for allowing me to take that time to go down and honor him. And he was very appreciative and he made a trip back up here and I think, I heard he sent you a letter, so that was, um, very nice of him and he did drive up here to hand that to Trudy. So, that was very nice of him to do that also. Wanted to make sure you guys all enjoyed the reading. Anybody else have anything or any guesses? Okay, we have a motion to approve the bills.
It's a move.
Sorry.
Motion move by Councilor Coast and second by Council President Sturz. Councilor Coast?
Yes.
Council President Sturz?
Yes.
Council Shamp?
Yes.
Council Chamberlain?
Yes.
Council Sturz?
Yes.
Council Frye?
Yes.
Six A's, zero N's. Motion carries.
We have a motion for adjournment, please.
Sorry.
Motion move by Council President Sturz and second by Councilor Frye. All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Motion carries.